I'm calling the May 7th, 2024 meeting of the Board of Education to order per Government Code Section 54950, executor and Education Code Section 35140, executor at 5:00 PM. As trustee Frazier will participate via teleconference, all votes will be taken by roll call. We will now be adjourned to closed session for the purpose of discussing the following matters: Public employee discipline dismissal, suspension, release, leave, assignment, non-relection, non-reappointment, resignation, reinstatement pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, custodian; Personnel matters, public employee appointments, employment pursuant to Government Code 54957; Director two, occupational therapists, principals and assistant principals; Claims, special education settlement agreement for student identification number 1565 for $75,000 and a general liability claim number 637062. Is there anyone present who would like to address any of these items? Seeing no one, we will adjourn to closed session at 5:01 PM. All right, I'm going to show us reconvening to regular session at 6:00 PM on the dot. And our report out of closed session was the board took action to approve the special education settlement agreement for student identification number 1565 for $75,000. The motion was made by Mrs. Anderson, there was a second by Mr. Youngblood, and the vote carried 5-0. And now, to open up our board meeting, I am happy to introduce the Esperanza Show Choir with the leadership of Michael Klein. And so they're going to... They're going to open the meeting for us.
Hey, good evening, everyone. How are we doing? We are Reverberation. We are the show choir at Esperanza High School. The thing that sets a show choir apart from a regular choir is not only do they sing, but they also dance. They compete and they perform at local competitions throughout the year. They put together a group... Oh, I'm so glad. I was like, kids, if you can like turn around while they're singing or something, figure it out. I'm so glad you guys can catch it. But they've had a really fun year. This is their second year in existence, and they took home one second place and two first-place trophies at their competitions this year. Yeah, really proud of them. Musicianship and showmanship awards, best performer right there and right there, and we have run scrambling from work to come up and join us. I told you to just run up and join us. But they are phenomenal kids. The interesting, cool thing about what we do is we put together different styles of pop music, different genres, to put together to become a story. And so the song that we're going to perform for you is called "Secret for the Mad." It closes our set. It's a story. It's called Fernando. It's set in a faraway, in like 1804, Fernando returns from a faraway war, and she's changed completely, and her family's trying to figure out what happens. And it's really the story of how a family can come together and bring someone out from the muck and mire of whatever they're going through to come together and bring them back into the family. It features two soloists, Kenzie Grimes and Preston Wilson. On a personal note, I just want to say this is my first year in the district, this is my eighth year teaching, and this is just the best year of teaching I've ever had. These are... Yeah. Let's go. These are just the greatest students in the world. I love Esperanza. I also teach at Bernardo Yorba Middle, two fantastic schools. The culture has been wonderful, really positive. I'm going to really miss these seniors a lot. We hope you enjoy. This is "Secret for the Mad."
I've got a secret for the mad. In a little bit of time, it won't hurt so bad. And I get that I don't get it. When you will burn right now, then you won't regret it. You're not gonna believe a word I'd say. What's the point of just drowning another day? And I get that I don't get it. But the world will show you that you won't regret it.
Little things, all stereotypes, they're gonna help you get through this one night, and there will be a day when you can say okay and mean it.
I promise you. It'll all make sense again. It'll all make sense again. It'll all make sense again. It'll all make sense. It'll all make sense again. Chicken teeth, ah, tell me the truth. I'm a shoulder you can cry on. Your best friend. I'm the one you can rely on. You were always sure of yourself. You were always sure of yourself. Now I see you broken a feather. I see you broken a feather. I hope we can patch it up together. Chicken teeth, ah, you and I both know. All the heartaches come and they go, and the scars aren't leaving. And you'll be dancing once again. And the pain will end. You will have no time for revenge. Chicken teeth, ah, you and I both know. The sun is still in the sky, shining above you. Let me hear you say once more, like you did before. It'll all make sense again. Go as we go. It'll all make sense again. Go as we go. Go as we go. Can you hear the drums, Fernando?
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you, guys. Michael, before you leave, I just want to make everyone aware that Dr. Gates stole Michael from Los Al. So we're glad to have you here.
Okay, a big thank you once again to Esperanza Show Choir. You guys did amazing. And I think it's just so important that we do these before board meetings because if anybody, parents are watching at home, you can see what is available at your high schools. So with that, Mrs. Buck, will you lead us in the Pledge of Legions?
Let's begin. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so next I'm going to introduce our next speaker, who is giving our inspirational message. She's kind of a household name. Everyone knows her, Edie Israel. She has done amazing things for our community. In fact, she just really spearheads for the Yorba Linda Women's Club scholarships for all of our students, you know, in our district with arts, and it was just an amazing program. And it really just recognizes all of the talents. And so I'm pleased to ask Edie Israel to give us our inspirational message for the evening. And if she can get a microphone, please?
Thank you. Is it on? Yes. So good evening, Superintendent Alex Chernus, Board President Leander Blade, our honorable trustees, staff, ladies and gentlemen. I am going to speak to you tonight about the Yorba Linda Women's Club Scholarship Program. The Yorba Linda Women's Club is comprised of about 125 members. Now we're growing. And one of our members is Mrs. Carrie Buck, which we really appreciate and so glad that you're with us. Last night, and that's last Thursday, we had a very exciting evening as we had our Yorba Linda Women's Club Annual Scholarship Award Event. And I have the privilege of being this chairperson of the scholarship portion. And our committee, along with the Arts Committee, reviewed applications and artwork to determine winners. We had over 400 attendees, which implied students, families, teachers, and administration. It was a great turnout. And that night, $45,000 was awarded to various categories. Starting with the art contest, there was first, second, and third place in each category, which included painting, drawing, 3D art, and photography. Judging was divided into age groups, nine to 10, and then 11 to 12. And one senior from Valencia was best in prize, and she received a $1,000 scholarship. Next, the teacher grant award. This is a new category, which Louise Hernandez, one of our wonderful members, started a few years ago, and it's really grown. And it's just to provide a little acknowledgement to some of the teachers. And we had $4,000 to spend on that, and had 23 teachers from all grades were honored. And at our event, we had three teachers come up and present what they used. Not a lot of money to do, but it was just amazing. A first... Two first-grade teachers from Fairmont talked about a really great phonics program that's effective with their students. And then a high school teacher from Valencia used his money to get some textbooks that will help his students write more college-level papers. So it was great. Another one, which is amazing, is a longtime Yorba Linda family, the artist's family. Gordon and Marie Artis's son Matthew was awarded a scholarship in 2018 from the Women's Club. Matthew was born deaf. I'm trying not to cry. Matthew was born deaf. And through the school support, and through the support of this district, Matthew not only graduated from college, but he's in graduate school. And this made a huge impact on the artist's family. So since 2018, they have collaborated with us to provide scholarships and have since started their own foundation, but we still collaborate. And so their foundation awards scholarships to college-bound seniors who are deaf or hearing impaired. Five students were awarded this scholarship. That is amazing. It was just so great. 23 students were awarded academic scholarships and four vocational scholarships, which totaled $27,000. And these students are so accomplished in what they do scholastically, but also their contribution to community, which is amazing as well. We had to go through, on the academic side, I think about 80 applications. And each of them, all of them, mentioned a teacher, a counselor, somebody that really made a difference in their academic career. Emotional support, helping students apply for grants. The other program was the Avid program, which has been... We had so many avid students win. These students are coached and trained to apply for college successfully, and it's just a generational game changer in our community. I'm going to try again. My favorite category is the most improved senior from each high school. This is something we started last year, and it was so well-received. We're going to continue doing it. Each student, each school, the counselors from each school nominate a student. One student, for example, was 50 units behind in his junior year, and is caught up, he's going to graduate through the help of counselors, special programs, night school. And, you know, it's interesting. I just said, "So what happened?" And he said, "I got it. I know I have to do this." And that was great. The best part about that category is those four students have never had an award, never. So they trotted up, and 400 people watched them get an award. So at the end of the evening, there was such joy, and it was just so fulfilling to see these students and the teachers and the counselors get together and have such a great evening. And for sure, we have a great district here, doing very special things. Last but not least is if you see the craft fair in November or March, shop it, because that's where we get all of our money. It's our only fundraiser. So that's all I have to say. But thank you so much for this opportunity. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Edie, and thank you for all that you do.
Could I just... Can I say a couple words? There we are. It's super low, but it looks like it's on. The light's on. Thank you, Edie, for coming and sharing. I've been able to do some of those scholarship evaluations and do all of those through the Women's Club, and it's a wonderful opportunity. I'm super excited that you had that new opportunity for the students that are the ones that have made such great strides. So I am so proud of the Yorba Linda Women's Club, and thank you for coming and sharing. Thank you for inviting her.
Of course, and I'm a member as well until last year. No, you're fine. But last year, that's where I remember, I don't know if you guys remember, those bracelets that I was... The Travis Ranch Girls, they were selling the bracelets at the craft fair. And so it's a super... It's a great event, and so we have a lot, a lot of young entrepreneurs there as well. So if we can get out there, especially since it's supporting our students, that would be great. Okay, I'm going to do roll call. Is Todd on? Okay, so Todd is via... What is that? Not Zoom. Calling. Todd is calling in tonight, so I'm going to show that all of our board members are present, and our student board member, thank goodness, was able to make it as well. Next is the approval of our agenda. And originally, our student board member Emily Sun had a conflicting event and was not going to be able to join us tonight. However, her event was canceled, and she is here. Before I take a motion for the approval of the agenda, I'd like to ask that the board consider adding the student board report item back onto the agenda right before the superintendent's report.
Good for me. Good.
Good.
Okay. Todd, you good with that?
I'm good. Absolutely.
Okay. All right, then I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion by Mrs. Buck. I have a second by Mr. Youngblood. Any comments? All right, all those in favor. I have to do a roll call vote.
You want to start with me or with Emily?
Emily.
Aye. And Mrs. Buck?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Motion carries 5-0 with an aye from our student board member. All right, our public comment announcement. Our public comment cards are available in the foyer. Cards must be completed and turned in prior to the designated time for public comment. There will be a maximum of three minutes per person, depending on the amount of the speakers. If translation is needed, please let us know ahead of time, so we can ensure that we are prepared. We do have a civility policy, Education Code 220 prohibits discrimination on the basis of disability, gender, gender identity, gender expression, nationality, race, or ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation, or any other characteristic that is contained in the definition of hate crimes, set forth in 422.55 of the Penal Code, including immigration status. And just one comment about that. We're not going to tolerate this time if someone comes up to the podium and wants to make any comments about people's religion or say the word carpetbagger. They will be asked to leave immediately. Now I need a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting on April 16th, 2024, as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Anderson, a second by Mr. Youngblood. Any comments? Roll call vote, please. Ms... Emily?
Present. Oh, yes.
Yes. Mrs. Buck?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Youngblood?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Motion carries 5-0 with an aye from our student board member. Okay, and I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Young to introduce our avid middle school standouts.
Okay, good evening, President Blades, trustees, Superintendent Dr. Chernus, and fellow executive cabinet members. Tonight, we will take the time to honor some very deserving eighth graders in our advancement via individual determination program known as AVID. AVID is a nonprofit organization that supports students by helping schools shift to a more equitable, student-centered approach. The program's mission is to close the opportunity gap by preparing all students for college and career readiness and success in our global society. Each year, the AVID Standout Award is given to students who demonstrate excellence, collaboration, integrity, and service in their academic achievements and individual determination. These six students who are being recognized tonight are being recognized for their high GPA, community service, and involvement in leadership and extracurricular activities. Many hours of dedication and hard work are behind these students' accomplishments. This recognition represents the determination, perseverance, and commitment each student has demonstrated toward their education. Joining us to honor and support these outstanding students are their principals, counselors, teachers, coordinators, and Paul Laporte, our district's avid teacher on special assignment who supports and coordinates the program across our 24 schools. In addition, we would also like to acknowledge and thank our students' families for their continued support and being present with us tonight. I'd like to invite at this time avid eighth-grade standout from Bernardo Yorba Middle School, Miranda Perez, and avid teacher Phil Seitz to join me next to the lectern. Also in the audience to support Miranda tonight are Principal Dr. Beth Fisher and Assistant Principal Rachel Collins.
Miranda Perez is an outstanding example of what AVID can do with a student who is individually determined, yet needs a little guidance and support. She readily accepts direction and then focuses on the learning. She is not deterred by the tasks at hand, but is driven to grow as a learner. She gets along with her classmates, who respect her and her work. Her work in the core classes outside of AVID only further demonstrates Miranda's capabilities. Let's give her a round of applause.
Please stay standing and shift a little bit to the side to make room for our next wonderful standout. Next up, I'd like to invite the avid eighth-grade standout from Kramer Middle School, Melanie Rebouarluwa, and avid teacher Kristen Spicer to join me. Principal Michael Young, Assistant Principal Matt Callaway, and avid site coordinator Beth Missouri are also in attendance to cheer on Melanie tonight.
Hi. Melanie Rebouarluwa was selected as Kramer's avid standout this year. Melanie's academic growth exemplifies the successes of the AVID program, while her character exceeds school expectations. Melanie is a 4.0 honors student and an ASB leader, but above all, she is a kind, encouraging, and empathetic person. She is well-rounded and dedicated, balancing her time between academics, sports, service, and family responsibilities. AVID has helped Melanie focus her future career goals and develop skills for success in pursuit of becoming an immigration lawyer. Well done, Melanie.
Next, we'd like to recognize avid eighth-grade standout from Travis Ranch School, Anora Doty, and avid teacher Kimmy Carlos to join me. Kristen Petrovaki, principal at Travis Ranch, is also with us this evening.
Before I start, it was really cool because Preston, who did the solo up there, he was an avid standout for Travis four years ago. So that was pretty darn special. These kids are so rad, I swear. All right, Anora is a really, really special young lady who embodies every expectation of an avid student. She is positive, energetic, focused, and dedicated. She's always working on her academics, her art, her relationships, her character. Anora is a light on our campus. Her joy is palpable, heard through her laughter, seen from her smile, and felt from her inclusiveness. She's a well-rounded individual who embraces challenges with grace and perseverance. She will undoubtedly do great things in this world and be who we want and need leading us in the future. Let's give her a round of applause.
Next, I'd like to invite the avid eighth-grade standout from Tuffrey Middle School, Isabel Ketychowski, and avid teacher Darshel Lapworth to join me. Principal at Tuffrey, David Okamoto, and Assistant Principal Sarah Barton are also here to support Isabel.
Isabel exemplifies individual determination. She has shown persistence and perseverance in school and extracurriculars. She does not shy away from challenges, but instead embraces them and puts forth her best effort with a positive and focused attitude. In addition, Isabel is a leader on our campus and is actively involved in school activities. As one of her teachers said, she demonstrates the perfect balance of grace, poise, and assertiveness that you would hope for in a leader. She is making our school a better place just by being herself, and she is a wonderful example for all of her peers. We couldn't be more proud to have Isabel represent Tuffrey as our avid standout recipient.
Next up, I'd like to invite avid eighth-grade standout from Validas Middle School Academy, Danielle Juarez, and avid teacher Sabrina Bowie to join me. Danielle has a whole group of supporters here this evening, including Validas Principal Dr. Krista Borges, Assistant Principal Genesis Melendres, Counselor Denise Placencia, and avid site coordinator Jackson Keller.
Danielle truly embodies the avid spirit. He has a genuine passion for learning, consistently going above and beyond to achieve his goals. Danielle is not only supportive of his peers, but also a natural leader, guiding and inspiring others towards success. His well-rounded character is evident in his involvement as an ASB president and wrestling team captain. Danielle's positive attitude and willingness to help others makes him a role model for his peers and a true asset to our school community. Whether advocating for his needs or rallying behind classmates, Danielle's leadership, diligence, and compassion leaves a lasting mark on everyone he encounters.
Please join me getting ready. If we could have everybody shift just slightly down, we have one more amazing student to honor. Lastly, I'd like to invite the avid eighth-grade standout from Yorba Linda Middle School, Aiden Avila, and avid teacher Lena Howard to join me. They are joined tonight by Yorba Linda Middle School Principal Paige Stills and Counselor Sally Wirick.
Aiden truly exemplifies the ideals and spirit of an exemplary avid student who is truly well-rounded, excelling both academically and in sports. Despite juggling a very busy schedule, he consistently maintains a 4.0 GPA, always challenges himself, and perseveres through any obstacle. Aiden's leadership qualities and positivity make him a role model to his peers. His impressive work ethic and dedication to excellence ensure that he will undoubtedly achieve great things in high school and beyond. We are immensely proud to have Aiden represent Yorba Linda Middle School as this year's eighth-grade avid standout.
The avid eighth-grade standouts will also be recognized by the Orange County Department of Education and Angels Baseball on May 8th at Angels Stadium of Anaheim. All of our students will receive a certificate, medal, and possibly a Chromebook. Remarkably, Melanie Rebouarluwa, who we shared about earlier from Kramer, if you don't mind waving, will be awarded a $10,000 scholarship for college. And a personalized Angels jersey. She will be one of only eight recipients in the entire county. As a small token of our admiration for these bright young students, we will be presenting them with a custom PYL USD AVID challenge coin and a certificate. Let's congratulate all of our 2024 avid standouts with one more round of applause. Okay, I would now like to invite our avid standout students and teachers to walk behind the dais and shake hands with our board members, return to the front of the dais for a picture, and then return to their seats in the audience. Congratulations.
All right, we'll take a two-minute break and let the parents and the students, if they would like to leave, go ahead and head out, and the rest of us, we will resume in two minutes. Okay, now that everybody's back in their seats, let's, I'm gonna go to our student board report, and Emily, you could take it away for us, and we are very glad that you were able to make it tonight.
Good evening, President Blades, trustees, superintendent Dr. Chernus, and executive cabinet members. I'm excited to be here tonight to share recent happenings from our comprehensive high schools and alternative campuses. At Buena Vista Virtual Academy, Buena Vista, they celebrated its third annual open house steam night on Thursday, April 24th. Students, parents, grandparents, siblings, and friends learned about various reptiles, amphibians, and insects, practiced coding with Spheros and Ozobots, troubleshooted aerodynamics with rocket launchers, and created pinch bots and other spring crafts. The night was a fun celebration of all that Buena Vista students have accomplished throughout the year. At El Camino Real High School, El Camino students recently had the opportunity to tour the Fullerton College campus. They participated in a career interest inventory, explored some of the career options they were matched with, and delved into the majors related to those careers. Students observed different CTE classrooms, spoke to the professors, and asked questions regarding their program. They walked through the student library to seek resources that it offers. The Raptors also experienced Career Day. ECR had speakers from all military branches, marketing directors, real estate agents, investors, plumbers, and animation designers that students could interact with throughout two sessions. At Eldorado High School, it's Teacher Appreciation Week throughout our district. At Eldo, there is nothing more important than the relationships their staff have built at the Eldorado community. The Golden Hawks want to recognize their teachers who have been at Eldo for decades, including Mrs. Crays, Mrs. Oberly, Miss Anderson, and more. They also want to thank their newest teachers in the nest, like Mr. Merrill, Senior Schmieg, and Mr. Thomas. The Golden Hawk community is honored to work side by side with the likes of Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Liu, Miss Clemmer, and so many other amazing and talented teachers. They wish they could list them all. From Eldorado to all teachers in PYL USD, thank you for all that you do every day, every year, and everywhere. At Esperanza High School, their top jazz ensemble placed second at the California Jazz Championships in Folsom and will hold their final concert with guest artist Marcus Printup on May 23rd in their theater. The EHS Prom Rally will be on Friday, May 17th, with the dance on Saturday, May 18th at 7:00 PM at the Diamond Bar Center. In George Key and Venture Academy, George Key recently enjoyed a Marionette Show of the Wizard of Oz completed through the Circus Strum Center for the Performing Arts. George Key would like to thank their PSSO who funded this activity for students. Venture Academy is currently selling tickets for their spring dance on the red carpet, which will be held on May 24th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the Lakeview Multipurpose Room. Tickets are currently $20 and are available through the Venture office. Adult transition students from Venture and George Key and the Braillinda District are invited. At Parkview School, the Panthers celebrated their teachers and staff with a lunch on May 6th, honoring the work they do on campus each and every day. Additionally, the school had a treat station set up in the office to recognize and thank their dedicated parent volunteers for the next few weeks. The Universal Sports Institute at Parkview School Advisory Board reviewed applications this week and approved its first round of students. Parkview and the Universal Sports Institute are excited to welcome new students and families next school year. At Valencha High School, Valencha was revalidated as an avid national demonstration school, reflecting their school-wide commitment to engaging in effective instructional practices and their belief that they can reach every single Tiger on their campus. The Tigers look forward to hosting upcoming events such as their car show, senior night, athletic signing day, Memorial Day ceremony, and welcome PYL USD high schools at the Valencha Film as Art Festival. Finally, at Yorba Linda High School, Yorba Linda High School's annual stakeholder survey was recently completed, and the Mustangs are proud to share that 97% of staff, parents, and students reported that students feel connected at school. Seven Mustang track and field athletes have qualified for the CIF finals, which will be held on Saturday, and AP testing is currently underway with approximately 600 students taking an AP exam. Last week, YLHS hosted a Get Ready for Testing Spirit Week to encourage students to do their best on AP and state testing. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Emily, and another question for you. What has been your most memorable academic experience in the Placentia-Yorba Linda Unified School District and why?
I think that the most memorable academic experience that I've had the opportunity to have so far is AP Euro. I know a lot of my fellow students might not agree with that. It's an extremely rigorous course, and it's certainly something that puts your values to the test, but it taught me the value of determination and hard work and how, when it all comes together, it leads to like a remarkable reward. I remember walking out of the AP test and just thinking that all of my hard work for the past six, seven months had come down to that moment, and I felt good leaving that room, so, yeah.
Excellent. All right, next will be our superintendent's report, Dr. Chernus, please.
All right. I was distracted by that sign in the back there. That's a nice one, thank you. So tonight, I'm gonna talk a lot about some exciting new programs we have, and specifically, I'm gonna talk about the Universal Sports Institute. Couldn't be more excited for it. I'm gonna give an update on where we are with this program. Hear me? Okay. And, yeah, I think it's on now. Yeah, maybe turn it up a little bit. And I'm gonna also address some misinformation out there because this is my opportunity to do so. So what is this program? Well, first of all, we have an incredible advisory board. We have all four of our comprehensive high school athletic directors on our advisory board. We also have principals on our advisory board. We have coaches on our advisory board, and this is all on our website. And so we are relying on some of the best and brightest to give us the best information. This program, a lot like our Orange County School of Computer Science, is why I'm convinced people are coming back to our district. And I know every meeting I talk about enrollment, but that is critically important. To date, we are now 500 more students over where we were last year at this time. And that, yes, you're allowed to clap for that. Everybody can clap for it, yes. I'm gonna talk about that in a moment, too. It's okay to clap for things that are good for kids. We have started to put pieces together for the Universal Sports Institute. One of the most important pieces we put together, I think personally, is the integration of this new pathway to support our students with disabilities. And so we're working with a company that has already worked with quite a few of our students. It's called BC Adaptive Fitness, and we hope to bring them to our board for a contract in the near future to offer fitness-type programs for our students in our district with special needs. Kids will be coming over, our life skill kids from our comprehensive high schools will be coming over for classes. You know, physical fitness for many, many students with disabilities is critically important. They have a higher percentage of obesity, diabetes, and so what we need to do while we have them is develop lifelong exercise skills for them. And so I couldn't be more excited about this program. So just some brief updates, and we'll keep bringing these updates to the board and to the community. We started April 1st. We already have 60 applicants, and I will tell you, these kids are incredible. We have about 20% of our kids are in district, I'm sorry, out of district, about 80% are in district. These kids, we have aspiring Olympic ice skaters. We have great kids that play baseball and soccer and basketball, dance, and so what we're doing is we're starting to meet with a lot of different coaches and bringing them on board so these kids can get the specialization that they want while enrolled in Parkview. And so we've changed our focus a little bit, and so we are flexible. We've shifted from an elite to more dedicated, purposeful, committed kid. And so, you know, elite has this connotation that we only want Olympians, and that's truly not it. We're gonna serve kids in this program from eight to three, but we're also gonna serve our students in our comprehensive high schools after that. And so we're already talking about ways to do that. Classes, fitness-type classes, kids can sign up, middle school kids can go on Tuesday and Thursday after school and sign up for agility class. And we can take the first 50 kids that sign up, and they're in this class for, you know, a period or a term. And again, this is a free program. We are going to fund this from the enrollment that we have, and that's our intention, is for this to be a cost-neutral program, but I'm gonna get to that in a little bit because that's come up in budget and transparency, so I'm going to talk about that. But we're gonna staff it with coaches, certificated sections. We have some teachers that were overstaffed in PE, for example, but they have a weightlifting certification. They'll come over during the day and do weightlifting. We have a basketball coach, that's our assistant coach at Eldorado, he's been with us 10 years. He's a walk-on coach, he doesn't work during the day. And so he's gonna come over and work with the kids and then walk over to the Tommy Lasorda Fieldhouse, get some basketball instruction. There's an entire park with an empty baseball field during the day. We're gonna have kids playing baseball, go over to the park, and, you know, they get to use that, and we're gonna have batting cages and whatnot. So a lot of aspirations we have, some really talented people putting this forward. If you haven't heard, Fullerton District has now opened theirs, and, you know, they're competing with us. You're gonna see more and more. There was more before, there's gonna be more after, but we're on the cutting edge. And just seeing the kids coming from Orange, from Rancho Santiago, we had a kid apply from Missouri, you know, it's just, it's a really cool thing, and it's the specialization that makes us, it's gonna make us different and exemplary. Now, I do wanna speak to the issue of, and I learned this from a colleague of mine, she sent me this concept called reactive devaluation, and it's a cognitive bias that occurs when an individual assigns less value or credibility to a proposal simply because it comes from an opposing party. The bias can compromise decision-making, and it hurts our kids. I added that to the definition, 'cause it does. These kind of programs, if it's good for kids, you're all allowed to clap for it. It doesn't have to be a bipolar, political divisive thing. This is a great program for kids. We have kids that can't afford going to a trainer, they're gonna be able to come, see a certified trainer and get support. We have kids that can't access some of the high-level equipment that we're gonna purchase using very specialized funding, and I'm gonna talk about that in a little bit. So I wanna talk about transparency, I'm gonna go over that. I'm gonna talk about how we communicate, how we've been communicating this program and how the district in the past has communicated new programs. I'm gonna talk about the budget, 'cause I hear that a lot. Do we have money for it? How should we evaluate this? That's important, and I'm gonna talk about those funding sources. So first of all, I wanna thank everyone for the support. There's been so many people reaching out, "Hey, Dr. Chernus, thank you so much, we're so excited." You know, ignore those people that are, you know, making videos about you or online saying stuff about you, and the reality is, it doesn't bother me, but I can't ignore it. I have to speak to the facts and the truth, and this is my opportunity to do it. So when I'm challenged, when either my integrity's challenged up here by people casting aspersions or saying that we're not being transparent, this is my opportunity to address that. So then, maybe someday, my kids are watching and they can see the truth. So let's talk about budget transparency. Does the board know what funds the district has? Simple question. I was the CFO of the county office, largest county office in the nation. My budget was $14.5 billion. I oversaw the budgets of 80 school districts. My question when I went out to districts was always, "Does the board know what funds you have?" It's a simple question, but what's been happening here in the past, it hasn't been a simple answer. It's been hidden. And does the community know what funds the district has? So I know talk is cheap, so I wanna go over a few things. So you can access all the district budgets on our website. You can see a PDF of all the financial reports and see these little snapshots at the top. Those are all budget presentations. And they, before I got here, they were all labeled "All Funds Budget Presentations." All funds. The district has many different funding sources. One is the general fund, that's called Fund One. That's what we pay teachers for, 80% of what a district pays out is salaries and benefits, people and benefits. That's Fund One. There are several other funds that every district until I got here presents to their school board and reviews in presentations so that the community can see it and so the board can see it. That was not happening here. None of these "all funds budget presentations" included all funds. When I got here with Mr. Stein, we presented the first all-funds budget presentation to the board and the community in at least the last five years. This one slide represents over $40 million of funds that was never presented to this community in any "all-funds budget presentation." So developer fees, that's part of Fund 25. Cafeteria fund, $13 million of ending fund balance. Child development fund, $11 million. Self-insurance, $16 million. None of these None of these were presented to the community or the board until I got here. So to say we're not being transparent with our budgets, this is proof we're being more transparent than we ever have been. So let's talk about communication, communication with USI. How have we communicated USI? Well, we've done it at board meetings, we've sent out Monday messages, we've done principal announcements and emails, we've sent texts to 40,000 families, we've sent emails, we're on the radio, we're on billboards, and we have paper handouts. The amount of communication we're doing about this program is more transparent than any new program that's ever been developed here, and I stand by that. And I want to give you an example of the last time this district approved a new school. August 11, 2020, the Buena Vista Virtual Academy. This is a case study in what not to do. In my 25 years in education, public education, the Buena Vista Virtual Academy is a school, we have about 150 students, they're located at the location of USI. In my 25 years in public education, I have never seen a new school approved by a school board on consent until I got here. This virtual school, we didn't have a study session, I've heard from Marilyn Anderson, "I want to have a study session on the budget for USI." Okay. Where was the study session for BVVA? No study session, no budget presentation, no RFP. So I found this because another thing since we got here, it's very easy to access the documents on our board agenda. If you go back to Archives 23, 2023 and prior, it's like playing Sudoku. Yeah, you cannot find anything. It's all PDFs, 600-page PDFs with no attachments to link to. So I found this document. This is superintendent, I don't know him, Gary Plutko? Or Greg Plutko? Plutko, okay, Greg Plutko. So on August 11, 2020, Buena Vista Virtual Academy was established by this school board, a new school, mind you, a new program, expanding, changing the name, of course, from the La Entrada. I have my notes in like the bottom of my power tray. I'm going to need my notes in a minute. So this program, and this is the best part, funding for the new school, no cost to the district. Was there a study session when Buena Vista Virtual Academy was established? Nope. Was there a budget presented? Nope. There's 150 kids in this program. So we have 150 kids in the program, no budget, no study session. And I have heard from the board here, I've heard from Marilyn Anderson, "I'm not going to approve $1 for USI until I see a budget." Where was the budget when this came on board? Are we losing money with Buena Vista Virtual Academy? That's the other thing I've heard. I've heard from a lot of people, "Well, we don't want to lose money. We don't want to lose money. We want to see a budget so we don't want to lose money." Uh-oh, Buena Vista Virtual Academy, we're losing $1.1 million a year on this program. So let me rewind. We approve a new school, we, the board, approves a new school on consent with no budget, no study session. The staff states that there's no cost to the district, which is absolutely absurd, and we as a district are losing $1.1 million a year on this program. The same program that I am proposing, we repurpose this facility for something that actually is exciting, can potentially make money, bring kids into the school district. So I'm going back to this reactive devaluation because I am convinced that if this program was presented two years ago and it was Plutko or Matthews or El Sasser, it could have gone on consent. But it's not. So here we are today, we have a program where we're losing $1.1 million. These are the facts. Now, given that, am I saying we should close this school? Absolutely not. Why? Because I don't think we're in the business of making money. And the fact that we spend an extra $1.1 million and take a loss on this program doesn't mean it's a bad thing. We need to invest in kids, and kids have different needs. Some of our kids like virtual education. Does it cost more? Yes. But that's okay. I'm not saying we close it, I'm saying, why aren't we looking at it? And why, three years ago, did we approve a specialized school? And today, all of a sudden, people are saying, "Hey, we got to see the budget for this." I find that ironic. Here's some other specialized programs we have. El Camino, very important program, specialized for kids, we lose $2.2 million a year on El Camino. Are we saying we should close it? No. But I'm here saying, this is information we should have, this is information the board has never looked at before, and before we say, "Hey, we don't want to start USI unless it's a positive profitable endeavor," then why are we operating programs like this that aren't positive profitable endeavors? And I hope USI will be, but I think it's a great example here. So let's talk about developer fees. That's our funding source, developer fees. Remember that budget I showed you that the board, the community was never shown before? We get developer fees. We have a legal opinion on developer fees that this whole board got, saying that USI is "an exciting opportunity for the district to provide its athletes with the most cutting-edge technologies. The district may use its impact fees, which are developer fees, to construct the training The board has this, but I've heard people in the community say, "Oh, well, you can't use developer fees." This attorney is the foremost expert on developer fees in the state of California. And this whole board, a month ago or so, got this letter, saying it's legal, it's permitted, and it's actually the appropriate expense for it. Here's our developer fee revenues. We got it, revenues for developer fees. Let me talk about how do you get developer fees? When families do development, you write a check, it goes to the city, a portion of it's called a developer fee, it goes to the school district. When big developments go up, apartments go up, that money goes to the school district in the form of a developer fee. We collect them, it's ongoing revenue. So the fact that we're using developer fees, first of all, is appropriate, we've already been shown that, but we're also, this is a revenue stream we're going to get every year. This is not one-time money, this is ongoing money. Now, the degree to what we get depends on the amount of development in the community. This is something the board should have been aware of. I found it offensive when Marilyn Anderson passed out a packet to educate us on developer fees, when she's been spending developer fees on the board and approving it. In fact, in 2021, when she was on the school board, she spent $1.266 million in developer fees on a specialized program at Glenview. Unfortunately, I doubt Ms. Anderson knew that, nor did the board, because the district never disclosed it. What you have here are purchase orders for technology equipment, for portables, using developer fees for Glenview's dual-language academy. Now, what happened in the past is the business office said, and by the way, this entire cabinet here is new, so I'm not casting any aspersions on any of you, we're cleaning things up, but what happened in the past is the business office would just say, "Let's use developer fees for it." It goes on under developer fees. This district spent $1.26 on developer fees on Glenview. There was never a study session on developer fees that was requested this year for USI. It was just expensed. So rather than just charging USI to developer fees, we've disclosed, here's what they are, here's how much we have, here's our revenue stream, and here's the acceptable use, and here's the legal opinion to be able to purchase them. That's transparency. What you see here, and I know you can barely see it, that's not transparent. School districts should not, and if I was the CFO at the county, I would say, "Whoa." School districts should not be spending $1.26 million on developer fees without being very clear to the school board and the community, that's what we're spending money on. I found $43,000 for developer fees for an architect. That's all I found, 2021. The rest of the $1.26 million spent, it would be on an attachment under purchase orders with a 20-number line stream, and you'd have to be able to figure out that that whole stream is applied to developer fees. So you've been spending developer fees, and you didn't even know it. So to summarize, we're taking a facility which has been running a program at a loss, and we're reinvigorating it with innovation and excitement. Those who support this program, those who support our computer science school, those who support individualized specialization for kids, that's your legacy. Those who engage in misinformation, those who oppose our innovative programs, that's equally yours. Now, on a positive note, if that wasn't positive, I kind of thought it was positive. It's Mother's Day this weekend, let's give a hand for all of our mothers out there. Okay, and this is why I have to read this. "In 1967, then 23-year-old Diane Roseman, soon to be Diane Chernus, along with her black roommate Angela Pickett, dressed up in their Sunday best, as everyone did, and attended the Second Baptist Church located in Watts." Now, just a few years prior, in 1965, the Watts riots had occurred. Now, to me, and I know my mom would probably disagree, but to me, that's courageous for a 22-year-old kid, a white UCLA grad, young Jewish girl, to go with her black friend to Watts, to a church. The speaker that day was Dr. Martin Luther King. Dr. King spoke at the Second Baptist Church on several occasions. The Second Baptist Church was established in 1885, it was the first black church in Los Angeles County. So my mom heard the gospel, the choir sing, she listened to Dr. King talk about nonviolence, justice for all, and a future for black Americans. "So, Mom, I know you often tell me you're proud of me, and I've never told you I'm proud of you, but your attendance at this church in Watts was an impactful way of you speaking out against injustice. It taught me a lot, it was courageous in the face of adversity, so I am proud of you. Happy Mother's Day." And that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Chernus. All right, we are now in our public comment session. Public comment is an opportunity for the public to provide input to the Board of Education. During the public comment period, board members do not dialogue with speakers or make comments regarding the information shared. We have 16 people wishing to speak tonight, and so each speaker will have 1 minute and 30 seconds each. As the speakers come forward, I'm going to ask that you give us your name, and then you repeat your name as you come to speak. And I'm going to call the first four speakers, and I'll have them sit in the front row, ready for their comments. Ed Gunn is our speaker number one, Dee Lawrence Radlauer, Susan White, and Steve Safka. First is Ed Gunn. Our first speaker is Ed Gunn.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, how are you tonight? I first want to say, teachers good, union bad. They hate, why do unions hate? They hate what they can't control. Excelling kids pass them with district-run charters. If the union was involved, they would dumb down the system. Do not let them be involved. I have a sign on my back, "Chernus for Governor." If our state was run like Chernus runs this district, people would be fighting to come here instead of fleeing. Why are they leaving? Because this state is controlled by unions, and unions suck. No out-of-the-box thinking by unions. All they want to do is stand in our children's way. Why were our schools shut down during COVID for so long? Teachers' union, that is why. I was in a union once, local 324, for six years. All I did was watch it, dumb people down, lower their effort and output, and kill their innovativeness. If a union is backing you, like Marilyn Anderson, here I hope that you get defeated this coming year, in November. Once upon a time, she told me she was a conservative, and I donated $500 to her campaign, the worst money I ever spent in my entire life.
Dee Lawrence?
I have a number of questions and concerns regarding the Universal Sports Institute. Since the RFP for the USI is not on tonight's agenda, barring a special meeting, the earliest the award of any contract can come before the board is June. If it is approved, doesn't the project then have to go before the California Department of State Architects' permits and approvals? Given how long it takes to get an approval, just look how long it took to get the lights at Eldorado approved, how on earth are we announcing an August open date? Despite my objection to this project based on philosophical grounds, excuse me, and the lack of transparency, and I believe, yes, there is a lack of transparency, and I will address that in a moment, aren't we also promising now a product we can possibly deliver by August? Are you under the belief that this project does not need to be approved by the state? What about permits for anything beyond demolition work? Please. The committee wants answers to these very basic questions. Don't worry about it, trust me, and it's only coming from developer fees, which were already allocated, are wholly inadequate responses. Developer fees are part of our limited budget, and our desire to trust but verify is not a personal attack. Isn't transparency the principle behind the open meeting policy? Simply because there were no study sessions or budgets in projects that came before us, does that make it okay now? If it was wrong then, as you asserted, why is it wrong to do it now? Let's do this right, pull the reins, and stop putting the cart before the horse.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan White? Susan White.
I'm Susan White, here tonight on behalf of a Yorba Linda high school parent who was unable to attend, and I'll read her statement. My name is Angela Eilers. I'm unfortunately unable to attend because I'm at a PTSA committee meeting, but did not want to let this opportunity to go by without pointing out that the district has shared several times on every social media platform, as well as in an email from my children's school, about the U.S. News &amp; World Report rankings. It was stated that 40% of the ranking criteria was based on student AP class involvement and test scores. The high schools received high marks partly on the backs of our AP students currently taking tests this week. They have received no support at the district level after imploring you to start the school year sooner and giving them more time to learn the content. Instead, their teachers have donated their time on weekends, early mornings, lunch breaks, and evenings to help their students prepare and learn all the critical information on time. I'd like to give a shout-out to my kids' AP teachers who have gone above and beyond for their students, Mr. Hipwell, Mr. Walls, Mr. Bouchon, Ms. Ferris, and Ms. Nunez. They are the best of the best in the district. This fall, when you tout the AP scores, be sure to thank all the teachers who got our students over the finish line. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Safka.
Good evening. My name is Steve Safka, and the comments I'm making tonight are my own. They're not being made on behalf of any anonymous sources, real or fictitious. First, I want to commend you, Dr. Chernus, and this board for the amazing job you've done navigating us safely through all of the chaos and layoffs that have plagued most of the surrounding districts this year. Secondly, to combine multiple benefits of the addition of district-run charters, OCSCS, and Universal Sports Institute, coupled with the partnership with the Nixon Foundation, are prime examples of projects that'll strengthen our ability to stabilize and grow our student population, as well as significantly enhance the strong and robust academic environment that already exists in this district. Finally, a personal observation. Shortly after 2000, I served as a member of the district steering committee tasked with getting community approval for the bonds that provided funding for the construction of Yorba Linda High School. Along with that came an increase in property taxes. If there's ever been an issue where there was more controversy or wider polar positions in my time, I can't think of one. Yet I don't ever recall the degradation of decorum and respect that's been demonstrated at recent meetings here. The snide comments, innuendo, and anonymous offerings, along with resulting high partisan outbursts, his behavior, I think few of us would want our kids to emulate in a classroom. Robust discussion can be done with respect and integrity, and I call on everyone who attends these meetings to conduct themselves accordingly. Anyone witnessing recent meetings would be hard-pressed to see Yorba Linda as a land of gracious living. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers are Patricia Honzo, Linda Mannion, Tim Murray, and Nellie Raphael.
Our school district receives tax dollars to administer programs. Therefore, it is a local government office with five elected school board members. I am a part of the superintendent elementary school advisory committee, and on April 23rd, I was kicked off the Zoom meeting after half an hour, when attempting to rejoin, the pop-up window gave me the reason. And I have a screenshot of it. It states, quotes, "The host removed you from the meeting. Retaliation is a bad look." My triggering chat comment was the following: "PYLUSD will not get 18.5 million from the state of California for the next school year, so why spend on non-urgent programs in 2024-25? The community did not ask for the Sports Institute, and 3 million will be spent by June 2024." Then I was kicked off the Zoom by the host. The cuts are coming, and the superintendent is on a shopping spree with extremist board members. We must object and speak up. Thank you, Mrs. Gray, for answering the question about mental health counselors. She confirmed that only Title I schools will have mental health counselors in the next school year, which means that if you're not a Title I school, you are losing your mental health counselors.
Thank you.
Tonight, I want to respond to the numerous social media posts stating that Apple is putting out misinformation and misleading the community. As the official spokesperson for the association, I can certify that this is simply not true because I have not posted anything on social media on any topic. My time has been spent supporting our students, teachers, and community through Apple events directed by the Apple Executive Board. To name a few, over the years, Apple has donated $60,000 in college scholarships for high school seniors, holiday gifts, food and clothing to over 1,000 homeless students and their families, $2,500 to the Reach Foundation in support of the Shamrock Run Middle School Track Meet and the District Artworks Exhibit, $5,000 to the Gear Up Program, $1,600 to support this year's Utility Unity Dance at Yorba Linda Middle School, and we were happy for a shout-out from Dr. Chernus. $500 for high schools to support graduation activities for seniors. We hosted the annual Bunny Bash, where young children enjoyed face painting, cookie decorating, coloring pizza, and a picture with the Benjamin Bunny provided by our high school volunteers. In addition, I'm excited to donate an additional $1,662 that we received for our recent participation in the Anaheim Ducks Educator Night. Once again, this will be earmarked to support the district unified dance.
Thank you.
The message is clear. When Apple is in, students win.
Tim? Are you ready?
I just was hoping for some decorum. All right. Dr. Chernus, you reached out to me via email on April 24th. You said that I seemed to have some interest in making USI successful for this district. I do. You also asked me, "Is there any things or any thoughts that I might have on USI?" My response included two suggestions, and one was simply to share a rough budget with the community to help to build more trust. I really believe that that would help. For a moment, I thought you were going to share that tonight with the community, but instead, you chose to lecture stakeholders that you were hired to represent. I don't know why it's something you can't share with us. I just don't get it. Your response with regard to fiscal transparency on the project, you told me in an email, and I can show it to people if they want to see it, that's a perceived issue. Perception is reality. The community is still waiting for a USI budget. If we get a budget, we can support you. This is not political for me. I am a coach. I am a former teacher. My kids are athletes. I want this to work. There was a similar pattern with the Orange County Computer Science Charter when a million dollars was later found for a computer lab. This is what I mean when I say transparency. Was that initially in the budget? Was it ever put out to the community in advance?
Thank you, Tim.
No problem. I just wish there wasn't such a credibility gap.
Hello, my name is Nellie Raphael. As we celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week, I want to thank our wonderful teachers in our district who go above and beyond to put our children first in all that you do. You are greatly appreciated. I also want to take this moment and highlight a few of many incredible achievements thus far from our wonderful school district. The latest news about our district announcing a civics internship opportunity at the Nixon Library is astonishing. Dr. Chernus creating a stronger relationship between the Nixon Foundation and the school district is admirable. Thank you for giving our kids this opportunity. We also have the Universal Sports Institute, which is a new educational and sports performance program here in our district. USI will host a free customizable athletic and academic development experience for our student athletes in grades 3 to 12. I know many parents have a lot of questions about this program. However, I'm confident this board will provide the community updates as they enter each phase of this project. They have been so transparent with answering emails and questions from concerned community members on many topics so far. In the community, many parents and educators are noting many positive remarks about USI, but also some community members are spreading negativity because some people don't like the idea of change because they fear the unknown. So I leave you all with this tonight. Change is not something that we should fear. Rather, it is something that we should welcome. For without change, nothing in this world would ever grow or blossom, and no one in this world would ever move forward to become the person they're meant to be. Thank you, Dr. Chernus, and our board majority for all that you do in putting our children first. Have a great evening.
Our next speakers are John Hanson, Shanny Murray, Randy Finney, and John Quackenbush.
Dr. Chernus, President Blades, and members of the board. My name is John Hanson. I'm a 48-year resident of Yorba Linda. At a recent board meeting that I attended, many speakers attacked our grassroots conservative board majority while also singing the praises of Carrie Buck. Let's take a look at Carrie Buck and the Measure 8 bonds that she, along with other pro-union, union-backed board members issued back in 2011. That board borrowed $22 million. That will cost our school district $282 million in debt payments. That is 12.8 times the funds that we received. As a sane, rational person, would any of you buy a car for $20,000? That would require over $250,000 in payments. The day the Measure 8 bonds were issued, the average municipal bond interest rate was 5.25%. Yet Buck authorized a rate of 7.8%. These bonds cannot be renegotiated, refinanced, or paid off early. Interest continues to compound and accrue for 31 years. Then, in 2042, we can finally start paying off this debt. By then, Carrie Buck and all of her friends will be long gone. A simple Google search will lead you to LA Times and Orange County Register articles that document this topic. I'll end with this. What they have done to this district and taxpayers is both unforgivable and outrageous, and is no wonder that Buck remains here.
Hi, my name is Shanny Murray, and for Teacher Appreciation Week, I just wanted to share my gratitude. As Gloria Johnson, a beloved 6th grade teacher at Golden Elementary, pointed out last month, teachers are the heart and soul of this district. PYL educators first started nurturing my kids at Wagner Preschool, fostering a love of learning, and showing them how to celebrate our differences. Mrs. Ragoe then expertly guided each through the transition to elementary school, where they spent the next seven years learning to read and write and explore, enjoying everything from gardening to science night to earning a graduate degree from Golden Eagle University. They were then challenged in new ways by the amazing teachers at Toffrey Middle School, who helped them navigate the early teen years and ensured they were well-prepared for the rigors of high school. At Eldorado, teachers have pushed them academically, providing new perspectives and encouraging critical thinking skills. My daughter is thriving in college thanks to the solid foundation she received here in PYL, and as my son gets ready to enter his senior year, I am full of gratitude for the amazing teachers we have here in PYL. And I will just, at the same time, since I have an extra 20 seconds, thank Apple, since most of the teachers are in Apple. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Randy Finney. This is still so hard for you to do. Okay, so I wanted to, okay, I have to cut my timeline, too. I wanted to just think, we're talking a lot about budget, and I just wanted maybe, if we want to, it might be too late now, but to reconsider full-day transitional kindergarten. I looked a lot of this up on the cde.ca.gov to make sure that we were in line with what they're asking. And since kindergarten and transitional kindergarten are still not required, California requires 180 minutes a day, not including recess. And originally, the extended-day kender was supposed to be for more playtime, and it wound up, we wound up having to do more curriculum, and it wound up costing a lot more money because we didn't, I don't know, think about, maybe you guys did, just about the release time for the teachers that they had to have, that students had to have PE, so we needed more PE teachers. We needed, oh, that's me. We needed lunch. We needed people to cover for lunch. So we're looking at lots of costs, and that's going to be the same thing with transitional kindergarten, too. So that's my concern. Also, because the ratio, oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. I will email you guys. Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent and board members. Name's John Quackenbush. Several things. I'll just start off with, last year, there was an access and inclusion committee that had been around for at least two years. I thought it had great ideas. I was on it. I would love for the board and the admin to think about reinstating that with community members, teachers, admin officials. There were some great positive things that came out of it that would help work with disabilities and non-disabilities, bringing them together, and those underserved. Also, one of the things I think we forget about that we look at on these things is the average kid. We're talking elite sports person. We're talking computer science. We're talking AP. Those are all great, and those are all needed, but we also need to serve our middle, our average student, which is our bigger base, and make sure we're giving them things. The, what else do I have? Sorry. Also, on bias, I'm sure many of you know I get up here, I speak, I probably speak against what a lot of you feel and believe is right, but we're all coming from the same spot, but we got to remember that just because somebody's speaking something different, that's not necessarily yours. It may not be that bias against the item, but for them. Also, I want to, we should continue the community involvement and the transparency.
Our next speakers are Linda Cohn, Maria Lupita Stubbs, Joan Herrick, and Lucy Curran.
I want to make sure everyone hears me. I taught for 32 years in public schools. I was an active dues payer member to NEA, CTA, and my local union. The union of 2024 is completely unrecognizable to me. 92% of Placent Yorba Linda teachers belong to Apple. Over 60% of their dues go directly to CTA. Are you aware of the mission shift in CTA? A mission shift funded by those teacher dues and supported and embraced by some school boards. I do not support this mission shift. I want to give you only one of many examples of the new CTA I do not recognize. June 2019 marked the adoption of CTA Proposal 619-12. This proposal, which I tracked through CTA, argued that minors identifying as transgender had a civil right to receive access to sensitive services, and I quote here, "without the barrier of parental permission." CTA also advocated for comprehensive school-based clinics to provide confidential access to services. They declared that trans children have a civil right to gender services and should not be forced to go through puberty in the wrong body. This CTA policy has turned into legislation like AB 2084, AB 665. I insist that school board members state their position on these policies. We deserve to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Maria Lupita.
Good evening, everyone. Maria Lupita Stubbs, Dr. Chernus, Executive Cabinet and Staff, Board Members, President Blades. I would like to congratulate you and the staff responsible for putting together the LCAB Community Forum back in March, which I attended. It was explained to me that this is the first year this particular format is used for this specific specific purpose and offered to the entire community. To be honest, I was expecting a slideshow presentation, and I was pleasantly surprised with how dynamic and interactive the workshop was. The groups were rotating from station to station, and we were able to offer input and ideas, which the staff was quick to write down and even start a quick discussion. One idea from my group was to have the same type of targeted interventions that we currently have for math, but to have it also for English, you know, reading and writing. I am pleased to see in Dr. Chernis's Monday report, just a couple days ago, that the kids will receive reading intervention in the new school year. That's awesome. May I suggest targeted intervention also in Spanish for our DLA kiddos who are a little bit behind in their Spanish, it's not easy doing school in another language, I can attest to that. So anyway, also, I'm not sure about summer, if the summer enrichment program will take place this year. I just want to say it was so well-received, the kids had the best experience. I do understand some funds, maybe a one-time thing, and that there are various types of funds, such as what you were explaining, Dr. Chernis. So all this I'm saying is that if there are applicable funds, it's awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Joan Herrick?
This is Joan Herrick. Last month, I visited the Buena Vista Virtual Academy campus. I met some of the most dedicated, caring, committed teachers and staff there. I observed a classroom of autistic and special needs students. Their teacher provided structure yet flexibility to meet their needs. They feel secure and safe in a space that is familiar to them, and they thrive. But change is hard and disruptive. Some students are facing personal or family challenges. When I stopped by the campus yesterday morning, I saw empty shelves and cabinets and furniture labeled for a move. I learned that all of the students, teachers, and staff will move out of the building this Friday, May 10th, in just three days. Why would you do this with barely five weeks left of school? They will go to temporary spaces, not their final homes, some at Parkview, some in office space just up the street. Siblings might be separated, principal and secretary will be at different locations. As of yesterday morning, when I was there, no letter from the district had even been sent to parents to inform them of the move. You say you're here for the students, but not for these most vulnerable children. Do you see the cruel irony of teachers packing for a move during Teacher Appreciation Week? Mr. Chernis, surely the demolition and construction of the Sports Institute can wait until school is out? Choose to be kind, let them stay and celebrate the end of the year as a school community.
Thank you. Lucy Curran?
Hi, Dr. Chernis and Board, nice to be here. My three children are all PYL USD alumni from K through 12. I taught in the district for 15 years, and my husband taught and coached for over 40 years. So I'm well-acquainted with sports in our district. The cost is the major concern to me. I went on your website today. I'm also concerned with the advisory board as it was to date. There's 11 people that were members, one administrator with no athletic experience, okay? And there were 10 members, three of whom had extensive wrestling experience. This seems like not equitable to have 30% of the staff devoted to wrestling. I do applaud the fact that there's going to be services for special ed students, that seems amazing, and I also applaud the fact that you decided to not make this an elite school for elite athletes. As we all know, 2% of high school athletes go on to play Division I sports. Only 8% of high school athletes play in college at all, and rarely are there any who are on the Olympic level. So I do appreciate the fact that you've rethought this, but we all know the cost of things is outrageous, and I would really like to see a budget before this goes further.
Thank you. All right, thank you to all our speakers. We're now moving to the consent calendar. Does anybody have any items that need to be pulled?
I have a few items. Tell me when you're ready.
One moment. I'm going to give myself more room this time.
Okay, I have five. So the first one is 17.3, 17.12, 17.16, 17.22, and 18.1.
Okay, I would like to pull 17.20, 17.3, 17, oh, wait. Oh, you said 3 and 22, right. So I am pulling, yes, my bike is on, 17.20 and 20.7.
Okay, so 17.20 and 20.7?
Correct.
Todd, do you have anything you need pulled?
No, ma'am.
Can we scroll up? Who's scrolling right now? Can we scroll up to the high school graduation requirement one? I think it's like one of the first ones. 18.1. Oh, it's pulled. Perfect. Thank you. Okay, let's, I need a motion to approve the following listed recommendations minus the ones that have been pulled.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar minus the ones that have been pulled.
I second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Anderson, I have a second by Mr. Youngblood. Roll call vote, please. Emily?
Aye.
Mrs. Buck?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Motion carries 5-0 with an aye from our student board member. Okay, so 17.3. That one's mine, so I'll start with that. I'll make a motion to approve 17.3, except as complete the project listed in authorized filing notices of completion.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Buck, a second by Mrs. Anderson.
I just had a couple of questions. One, related to, it's the new Dimension Nutrition Services Conference Room. Can you tell me where that's located, what's that going to be used for?
Sure, it's located at the, I guess we'd call it Casa Loma address, so we have our nutrition services staff there. They needed a new conference room, so they basically built into the storage area that's within that building. So if you go visit, it'll be attached to the offices as you go through there.
Okay, thank you. And then the second one is for the Bernardo Yorba Middle School demo and repair of two classrooms. Was this project related to the Innovation Lab demo?
Yes. Do we have a cost of that?
I don't have it with me, but you can get that, too. That's one of the purchase orders for New Dimension that has gone, that's been in our list of purchase orders previously, under that PO number listed there on the left. So I can pull that for you.
Have we been given any information on an innovation lab that's going in at Bernardo Yorba? I don't recall getting it.
I'm unsure.
I have not received any information either.
Was the Innovation Lab, was that the, was that the $1 million block grant for the Innovation and Technology that we voted on into September?
The Innovation Lab wasn't in the September budget.
So, Mr. Stein, there are purchase orders you're referring to for equipment going in the Innovation Lab?
Yes.
Okay. Are those on the agenda?
Yes. Well, they were last time as well, yes.
Okay, so the board approved them at the last meeting?
Some of them, yes.
Or on this meeting? And so the board's welcome to pull these items if they have questions about it? We can go through it.
Well, that's why I pulled it, because at the last board meeting, I became aware of the Innovation Lab that I didn't know about before, and so I didn't know that that was a purchase that was happening. So I was, or that the demo repair had already been happening.
17.3.
17.3.
Yes, the demo repair is happening, we're getting the labs ready for the school year.
When are we going to find out about the Innovation Lab? Because at the last meeting?
I don't know what you mean by find out about it. You've already approved equipment, and there's equipment on this agenda.
I didn't know that we were putting in an Innovation Lab.
I would be happy to have Dr. Fisher provide information on what the lab will look like, but the board has the information, and you can vote to approve it or not.
Okay. My understanding, and maybe I'm wrong, but the Innovation Lab last month that we approved for that was just the consulting fee to design it for $150,000. Is that correct?
That was part of the project, yes.
And then, and then in the meeting, in that meeting also, there was a $90,000 construction as well for the other ones, correct?
Yes, correct.
So we just approved it last month, the $90,000, and it's already completed in one month?
Actually, yes. So this one's been, it's, yes, because it's re-outfitting the current classroom, so there wasn't, it's basically tearing out some items and redoing the wall and flooring, so yes.
Yeah, it's not major construction, right? This is just basically a light remodeling TI project.
Yes, correct.
I am not going to be voting for this item because the Innovation Lab is not something that was included in the September budget, and I haven't gotten an updated budget list from the Arts and Music Grant. And originally, that line item wasn't in there. It's in there now, and it's taken money away from other items that we originally had in that September '23 budget. So I'm voting no.
Okay, are we ready for the votes?
Just a second. I'm also voting no. I voted no for the construction last month of the $90,000, so I'll just continue voting no.
So we are ready to vote.
It's going to be a great lab. We invite you all to come see it when it's done.
Okay, so we're on 17.3. Roll call vote, please. Emily?
Aye.
Mrs. Buck?
No.
Mrs. Anderson?
No.
Mr. Youngblood?
Absolutely.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes, please.
And I am a yes, please. Motion carries 3 to 2 and an aye from our student board member. All right, next, 17.12.
I'll make a motion, we authorize the use of DGS Contract Number 4-06-78-0031A for the purchase and warranty, removal, disposal, installation, maintenance, and repair of synthetic turf, athletic track surfaces, tennis courts, sport flooring, and playground surfaces with FieldTurfUSA, Inc., for the Universal Sports Institute.
Second.
I have a motion from Mrs. Buck and a second by Mr. Youngblood.
I was, I had a question related to the USI, and does the USI require any testing and inspection services for installation of any of the equipment and the remodel of the PDA?
I mean, we're talking about testing from?
Does the DSA have any?
DSA, no.
They don't have to look at any of the items related to?
No.
No, we checked with.
There's no structural alterations to the building. Therefore, DSA does not need approval, and we have authorization and clarification from DSA that we do not.
Can you provide the clarification and approval to us, please?
We'll be sure to get that to the board.
Okay, so do we have, like, actual plans for USI? Because I have not seen them, and I'm not sure where the turf is going.
The turf is going on the outside of the building, between Yorba Linda Boulevard and the facility. There's a diagram on our website on USI of where it'll go.
I was just going to say, it's very clearly marked on the website, it looks very nice. I like it.
And it's, everybody who's walked by, it's going to be like, they didn't think that the space was as big as it was, and they just think it's going to be amazing.
It's actually incredible, the proposal we got. You know, when we do turf fields at high schools, right now, it's about a million and a half dollars. The fact that this proposal is, you know, $100,000 to put in a new turf field, and this company does professional fields, they do, this is the biggest installation company for turf fields, so just outstanding, and the fact that we have this timeline to get this done by September, so we can open in September. I know there are some questions about that. We will be opening in September, provided that we, provided I'm still here, and I hope to be, and I hope this board continues to support us, because this is really going to be exciting.
Okay, I have, if we approve this, we're going to be almost a quarter million dollars so far into USI, which is quite a bit of money, and I have not seen any budget to build or construct. Do we have a budget?
Well, I've gotten questions about that, and again, this board has, in the past, approved bigger programs with no budget that are losing money. That being said, this is part of the budget. The other part of the budget is the public RFP that we put out, companies can submit, and so we have submittal from a vendor, we will be providing that information to the board. So I can't put a budget out until I know how much it's going to cost from companies that submit their proposals to us. And so the board will be getting that very soon, and you will have every opportunity to review and vote on every expenditure for this facility, because like in the past, when schools like BVVA were opened without study sessions or budgets, this will have a budget and plenty of time to discuss. But at this time, no, I don't have a budget, per se, but I will tell you that the equipment that we're using, we're using one-time developer fee money, which is an ongoing funding source, and just the fact that we're able to do something like this for $100,000 is just incredible. So I would say the board will have a very good idea about how much we're going to spend on equipping the facility, I would say in the next one to two months, and we'll be able to talk more about a budget when companies actually submit their proposals.
Okay, do we have, because this is a lot of specialized equipment, do we have a budget for the personnel to run the specialized equipment, for the physical therapists, sports psychologists, athletic trainer, et cetera, for all the personnel that are going in there?
The board will receive that once we get proposals from vendors.
Okay, and also, I would like a budget for the maintenance of all the equipment, and also for the liability insurance for that program, because I think that is also going to be a problem.
Yeah, well, you will provide that, we will provide that. It's our hope that this new program doesn't lose $1.2 million, like the current program in that facility is, that this board hasn't requested a budget for, but we will be getting you that.
Okay, perfect. And then I just wanted to also say, Dr. Chernis sent me information about the Fullerton Sports Program, and I thank you, and I looked into this new program, and?
Does this have to do with our item that was pulled?
Yes, it has to do with the Sports Institute.
No, that's not what this is.
This is about, this item is installation of a synthetic turf. And so if you would like to discuss it, tell that in your board report. I'm calling for a vote.
Wait a second.
I'm calling for a vote.
Wait a second.
I'm calling for a vote.
Point of order.
It is a Brown Act violation.
Point of order, the president has called for a vote.
To sit here and to talk about something other than what is on the agenda in front of us.
Okay.
Point of order, the president has called for a vote.
Miss Emily?
Aye.
Mrs. Buck?
No.
Mrs. Anderson?
No.
Mr. Youngblood?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Vote carries 3 to 2 with an aye from our student board member. 17.16, please.
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 23-27 to authorize the use of temporary inter-fund borrowing for the '24-'25 fiscal year.
We have a motion by Mrs. Buck. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Anderson, go ahead.
My question is, are we anticipating any inter-district, or any inter-fund transfers? And could you maybe share a little bit about what that is and why we do this?
Sure. So this resolution we take to the board, I think it's been every year for the past eight years, and basically it just allows that should the state, let's say, because in years past, they've held our money from one fiscal year to another, and it allows you to borrow funds from one fund to put in the general fund and then pay it back once the state gives you money. So it's just something that we do for a catch-all, to make sure that the district is able to shift funds around if we need to. It does require us to pay it back within 120 days of the fiscal year end, and so it's just a temporary authorization to be able to move, to borrow money and pay it right back. to be able to move, to borrow money and pay it right back, so. We, we do that, uh, honestly, especially right now, so I, I'm sure you've heard the news, like the state's revenues are, are coming in a little bit, uh, light, and so should they, um, uh, opt to, to extend our, our, you know, push our money into the next account, I'm sorry, fiscal year, it would give us that opportunity to shift funds around so that we would be, uh, able to withstand that.
And are we anticipating any of that this year?
I don't know, so I, I, right now, I, I have no, right now I'd say no, right, but the governor on the Friday should be releasing his May revision, and we'll have a better idea.
Thank you very much.
Are we ready to vote? Mrs. Buck?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Youngblood?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Motion carries five zero, seventeen point two-two.
I think we're doing seventeen two oh?
Was it seventeen two oh, or seventeen point, I just have seventeen point two-two and eighteen point one?
So, um, seventeen point two zero, uh... Two zero, seventeen point two zero. Move that we authorize the use of various CMAS contracts for the purchase and audio/video equipment, cabling, installation, and training for Production Access Group, Inc., E.K.C. Enterprises, Inc., Avidex Industries, LLC, and Extron Electronic, effective May eighth, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Buck and a second by Mrs. Anderson.
Okay, I pulled this one because in the memo, it states that cafeteria funds are gonna be used, and I don't think we're cabling for the cafeteria, is that correct?
Yeah, so basically what we've done is included, thi- this is, we don't have five hundred thousand dollars worth of projects on, on the books right now. What this does is it gives us the, the authorization to use these CMAS contracts where they're needed. So, right now, no, there isn't anything in cafeteria funds that we're planning on using, it was just making sure that we have, if they did need that, we could, right? And so, meaning that it doesn't restrict us to just general fund usage, it doesn't restrict us to Fund Twenty-Five or any of the others.
But if we did in, in the future, you could bring it back to the board for approval, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I think we should amend this one to strike out the cafeteria funds, because there's no plan on using it at this time, it's not foreseen, and just amend it and pass it, I would feel better about that.
Why, I'd just follow up the question.
Strategically, it allows, um, administration to make decisions that's the best for the time being, and we still get to approve or, uh, deny expenses as they come through, that doesn't mean they get to just use it however, so.
That's correct.
Is that correct, Gary?
Yes, that is correct.
I, I agree with Mrs. Anderson that if it says cafeteria funds and we're looking at audio/video equipment for a school, that it doesn't qualify, so I wouldn't want to put that in with it, so I would approve it was, if it was amended to remove the cafeteria funds.
That, that wouldn't be our recommendation, get the, i- is this an allowable expense?
It, it depends, it might, it might be, it depends on the, on the project, so.
Okay, okay.
I could see potential where there'd be AV needs in cafeteria areas where it would possibly be there, so I'm, why would we close off our options?
We're not really closing off our options, we're just, if it, if it, if it presents itself in the future, then it can come back up, it's not, we're not shutting the door.
I see us listing general fund, child development fund, cafeteria fund, capital facility fund, and capital facilities agency fund, correct? So this gives us flexibility depending on what the expenditure is, correct?
Yes.
If, when the actual project comes forward, will we identify what, where that funding source is?
Yes.
Okay, then our recommendation is not to make a change at this time.
Okay.
Well, um, one more question, what are the, um, projects that are currently listed for that, besides the ones that are listed in the, the, um, in the memo?
So we provided a, in the memo, and then we provided the board update, uh, but, um, so my understanding, and I have Jeremy here, in case we need to get some more detail, but we have, uh, upgrades to the equipment in all of the music rooms at all middle and high schools, we have a, a, um, oh, there's Jeremy, Esperanza High School, we have a, a, a media room that's, that's gonna be used for recording that we're putting in with it as well, um, and then we have other projects.
I mean, that, that was the bulk of it, the, uh, other item is, um, just continued conversion of a few of the classrooms where they're using a second input to digital from analog, um, which helps with the signal, and just the quality of the display, in, from those second locations in those classrooms. And we will be adding audio at the elementary classrooms, music classrooms as well, probably focusing more on a portable system for those, since those elementary music classrooms tend to move from year to year.
So, question, if the, um, audio system being used, it is something that is like a, is like, um, P.A.'s or whatnot?
In the music classrooms?
It's just anywhere?
Um, so it, it's, uh, distributed speakers in most of our classrooms, four speakers, that, uh, distributed in the classroom to produce the sound, not...
Instructional?
Yeah.
Not like the P.A.?
Not, not the P.A., this is distinct from P.A.
Okay. Okay.
All right, call for a vote, Mrs. Buck?
No.
Mrs. Anderson?
No.
Mr. Youngblood?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
And I am a yes, vote carries three to two. All right, so next would be seventeen point two-two.
Seventeen point two-two, I move that we approve contract renewal for crossing guard services at city-determined locations with all city management services, Inc., effective July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Buck and a second by Mrs. Anderson.
Um, I'm bringing this up because the city of Placentia does not contribute to their crossing guards, and years ago when they were in a financial, um, uh, difficulty, that's when this adjustment changed, and there was always, um, plans to revisit that, so I'm, I'm bringing this up just so that we're constantly having that conversation, and potentially next year, having a, either a blended model or having the city of Placentia take that back.
I second that, I think we should go back to them and ask them, the city of Placentia is financially stable from where they were several years ago, with I think they had two dollars in their account at the end of, uh, one year, and, um, relook at that.
Absolutely, this should be a point of conversation.
And if you want my help, I'd be happy to go.
Same. All right, call for a vote. Mrs. Buck?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Eighteen point one.
I make a motion, we approve revisions to the following board policies, five-one-two-eight-point-one, five-one-two-eight-point-two, five-one-two-eight-point-three, and five, did I say that right? Yes, and five-two-one-eight-point-four, they switched on me there.
Second.
Uh, wait, oh, I have more to read. Sorry, as they relate to the continuing require, uh, graduation requirements for comprehensive high school, continuation high school, adult school, and alternative independent high school studies, and I won't individually name those four.
No, I second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Buck and a second by Mr. Youngblood.
So I pulled these, um, one because they're board policy, and I think that we should review board policy and have even a brief discussion or explanation of, of what this is, so can you go through, um, the grad requirements and what has changed in relation to, um, um, special education and also the grad requirements, um, that were listed in the, in each of those areas, the work requirements, I had a few questions on.
Certainly, I can start with the, can you hear me? I, I can start with the special ed requirements, so what's happened is, um, new legislation that makes concessions for students with disabilities, one percent of our students with disabilities who take the California Alternative Assessment, and rather than have them, um, not graduate with what's called a diploma, they're calling it an alternative pathway to a diploma, this is intended, as it says here in, uh, number one on the, um, outline, uh, underlined one, that it's only those who take the alternative assessments, and so we are part of consortium that is working together to develop a course of study with the county of Orange, OCDE, and we're, um, developing that for our students, and so students with IEPs are able to have that as an alternative. One thing that is really clear with, with these students is it will count toward our graduation rate, which is great, but the second thing is, is they will be able to also stay in our adult transition program till twenty-two.
Can you maybe give a little bit of what that changed, what it used to look like, as, and before this changed?
What it used to look like is there was something called a certificate of achievement or certificate of completion for these students, and so this would not count toward the graduation rate for them, and that is something that we actually need to improve for our students on IEPs, and there was not an alternative course of study that was actually created for them.
Okay, I have a question about work experience, because it's listed in our, uh, adult nights graduation school, and it's also listed in our comprehensive, but it's not listed work experience for independent study or, um, continuation, and it's described in the two other ones that it's described in, it is differently, and I'm just, I just wanna make sure that we all understand what work experience is, and making sure it's applied equally to all of these different, um, board policies.
Yes, absolutely, so work experience should be something that we would want to add into all four so that students can be able to receive credit for that, and that's something that we're looking to add in so that as we continue to expand our work-based learning opportunities for students, that they can receive high school credits towards their graduation for that, and so, um, we would definitely be agreeable to adding it to the the two that it was missing from.
I, I'm kind of interested in what the requirements are around it, like how many hours do they work, is it for the whole semester? What does that look like when you're getting credits for it?
Sure, and so there's different examples that are provided from different, um, districts, as well as through the county of office education, we're working very closely with OCDE, um, what you would typically see is something like, um, two and a half credits for an average of two hours per week on the job, for a minimum of fifteen weeks, so thirty hours total, five credits for an average of four hours per week upon the job experience for a minimum of fifteen weeks, and so we just wanted to have the ability, as we're expanding our college and core readiness and work-based learning for students, to be able to provide credits to students who are, um, working.
Can you give us that information, so that we have that? And then, is this something, I'm thinking that this should probably come back for a second reading and add it to the other ones so that we're, we're being equal to all the other, um, and maybe even an explanation in here so that it's, you know...
A little more clear.
A little bit more clear, because, like I said, the one for the adult, it's like if, if there's skilled labor, you know, in their trade, and it's ju- it's just not really clear, and I wanna just make sure that there's no miscommunications.
So if we get back, could bring it back for a second read, have that, all that kind of cleaned up a little bit and included, that would be perfect.
Sure, we could bring it back, but the adult education one will read different than the others, because that's specific to Venture Academy, um, students, and so it would be the general language that's in the comprehensive high school, which is very general, and it, I believe, just says work experience.
Yeah, that's, that's all it says.
And then it would be in administrative regulations where we would lay out what that would look like, the details of it, and so we can simply add in the line to the remaining two, or we could consider bringing it back for a second reading, but it would just be that, that general line, and it would be the administrative regulations where we'd lay out the details.
Okay.
Yeah, the details don't go on the policy, the details would go outside of that.
Correct.
Right, but I think it'd be good for us to all have those details, because we, we weren't given those, and then the other thing I noticed in almost all the policies, is some of the numbering is off. You know, we get rid of number three, so number five should be number four, and number five should be number six, for the comprehensive high school, and then, um, for the continuation high school, we have letter I, um, for motor cultural studies, and then we have letter I for service learning, community service, would that be a J then, and then a K for elective courses?
Yeah, so maybe some clerical.
It's all a formatting struggle with Word, um, so.
I know.
Yes, they will all be cleaned up when the strike-throughs are removed and it's a clean copy.
Yeah, so I'm just thinking if we could fix some of that up, um, that would help, so we know exactly what we're approving.
Dr. Young, as, uh, as it stands right now, would you recommend that we take it as is?
With the addition of a line?
With the addition of a line.
If that's the will of the board.
Okay. So you're, you're comfortable, because if it's brought back to us, there might just be the change in the I and then a line, and that's what would be brought back, because, so we could potentially approve this tonight, and then you can, the, the, I could not, not fluff, but the extra stuff, you could send it to us separately so we know what we, what was behind it all.
Yes, the formatting with Word is, once we delete the strike-throughs, it will reformat the letters and numbers correctly, so that would be fixed, and then it would just be the addition of the work experience, if that's something.
And we've approved things like this before, when there just has to be adding a line, and then, you know, the format, so I'm good to approve tonight.
We typically do two reads, and if it's in consent calendar, it shouldn't be any trouble to put it in, just with the corrections, if that would be acceptable.
I just think it should come back. Especially since it's missing out of two policies already, just to make sure it's, it reads right. I'll turn on my mic, I think it should come back for a second read, board policy is direct responsibility of the board, and I feel like we should make sure we're doing our due diligence.
So are you wanting a second read because the lettering is off, because of Microsoft Word?
No, because of the work experience, how it's not in two of the policies, and it's worded kind of weird, um...
A single line?
Well, what, you want me to read it to you out loud?
Well, what we're talking about is a single line, and so if that's all that we've done, I don't think that that warrants a second read.
It wouldn't harm to do a second read if it's in consent calendar and it's fixed.
You know, let's just, we'll go ahead and we'll call for a vote, Mrs. Buck?
Okay, let me just read to you what it says.
Todd, do you need her to read what it says?
I'm looking at it right now.
Right, you're looking at it.
So, so it says, "No more than twenty of these elective credits may be earned in work experience or service-based courses." So I just want us to be clear, what work experience is, um, what do, what did you call it?
Work-based learning.
Work-based learning, and maybe we just add that kind of clarification in there.
Mrs. Anderson, the board president called for a vote, point of order, the board president called for a vote.
Mrs. Buck?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
I'm gonna say no.
Okay, Mr. Youngblood?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
And I am an aye, vote carries four to one.
I would like a copy of it when it's corrected.
Twenty point seven, please.
I'm sorry, did you say twenty points, oh, yeah.
That's what I was told, I think Mrs. Anderson pulled this.
Okay, yes, I did pull this one, so, um...
I need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the certificated human resource report.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Anderson and a second by Mr. Youngblood.
Okay, I pulled this one because, um, we are no longer voting on, um, principals and directors in our closed session, and as approving the H.R. report, we're symbolically approving these, and so I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that if, when we approve this, that Sarah Barton will be appointed principal at Tuffrey, David Yakamoto, principal at Eldorado, Hannah Chapman, assistant principal at Tuffrey Middle School, Chad Halo, assistant principal at Careyman Middle School, Richard Nagy, assistant principal at Yorba Linda Middle School, Christopher Losoya, assistant principal at Glenview Elementary School, and Sylvia Cuesta as early childhood education director number, um, two. And I just think it's important that we know who these people are and that we are approving these, and, um, that's why I pulled it.
Okay, can I clarify? Um, actually, Mrs. Anderson, you have it opposite and wrong, the appointment in closed session, which you were doing, is actually symbolic. What you have here is what is official. The board cannot approve these employees in closed session. They must approve them in open session on the personnel report. So what you have here is the same as before. This is the official board approval. There is no board approval of these members in closed session. It's against the law. And so what you were doing was symbolic.
Cause it was against the law?
It wasn't against the law if it's reported out. So it, even though it was symbolic, it, it was important at least for me because I thought it was a nice way to be able to talk about people and to bring it up and celebrate the fact that they're getting these positions. So thank you for pointing it out and congratulations to all of these employees.
Yeah, and we do celebrate them and we've sent out celebration emails to everyone. In the case of the assistant principals, we don't typically have them come to board meetings. But again, the board action in closed session, the symbolic action is truly symbolic. And so we are doing what is appropriate. And so I'm trying to be as transparent with the community as possible is the lawful board action to approve these folks is what you have here before you on twenty point seven.
Thank you. I'll move for a vote. Mrs. Buck.
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
An a and a. Motion carries five zero. And that will conclude our consent calendar and we will go into our communications and board report, Mrs. Buck. And is all five of us are going to do a board report? Todd, are you doing a board report?
Yes.
Okay, so we have 30 minutes for the five of us.
Okay, well, good evening, everybody. I wanted, I just have my calendar going, so my first one on the list is Love Placentia. So I'm just gonna highlight it and I'm gonna make sure and leave that, most of it open for you because I know you run it, Mrs. Anderson. I was lucky enough to get the job of photographer, so I got to go to Valencia High School, Kramer Middle School and Ruby Drive to go around and take pictures of all of the projects happening and to thank all of the volunteers who are making our schools look beautiful while they were there that day. I also attended the Valencia High School distinguished, distinguished scholar awards with Mr. Gary Stein and watched Chris Hertzfeld and his staff that had a coordinated, efficient program that recognized all of their distinguished scholars prior to their senior award ceremony. And it was a nice evening. I attended the North Orange County ROP Celebration of Success, recognizing one ROP school or student from each high school. And tomorrow night, we'll be recognizing retired board members and employees before our regularly scheduled meeting. I went to the North Orange County Angels Baseball Night, was also Star Wars Night. And for, instead of star, or instead of fireworks that night, they had a drone show. And it was really cool, really cool with all of the different Star Wars characters and sword fights with all the drones in the sky. Hadn't ever seen anything quite as exciting as that related to drones. So I wanted to highlight that. Next year at El Camino Real High School, there will be a drone course available for after school for all of the high school students in the district. So if you're interested or if you have a student that's interested, talk to the high school counselor to get signed up for that class. I attended the PTA fourth council meeting a couple of weeks ago and they held a Braver Angels Workshop on better ways to communicate in polarizing times. It was a great presentation and I just received the information today that I'm gonna pass along to Dr. Chernus so that he can look at it as well. In our board agenda, there were a couple of items. One was the jazz concert at Esperanza that I attend, that I happened to stop by during that week and the, one of our former students who is a musician came back and was working with the students. It was a remarkable experience and what a great way to bring the old, the former students back and celebrate with our new students. I just wanted to highlight that as well because I got to specifically see it. Additionally, last, was it last weekend? The Very Special Arts Event was at Main Place Mall and we, the Venture Academy Choir had a performance there led by Carmen Quantrill. And as you all heard in the meeting last month, they did a phenomenal job. So it was nice to go see them there for that performance and congratulations to them. I had planned on attending the Special Education Advisory Committee meeting, but I didn't get the update on the information, but I will be checking the minutes. But I wanted to let everybody know that if you are interested in those advisory committee meetings, the minutes are posted on the superintendent's page of our district website. So you can go in there and see what all of the discussion and items that they're discussing. So I'll be checking into that. Last weekend, I attended the dental clinic with, that was held at Melrose Elementary that was put on by the Placentia Rotary. I want to thank the Rotary for facilitating that event. Thank the staff for working that event as well. It was amazing. There were almost 100 students, 99 actually, that had signed up to come in and get free dental care. USC teachers had, that had started this program years ago, started it up again and this year they brought in, it, it didn't run through USC specifically. It was, it's an organization called IUDA. And UCI students, dental students came and assisted doctors that had flown in from all over the United States that were part of this program to work on all of our students and parents to get some dental care that they really needed. So thank you to the Placentia Rotary for facilitating that event and bringing it back. It had been gone for a few years and this was the fifth time. Last night, I attended the student recognition event at the, at the Performing Arts Center at Eld, at Eldorado and is a great way to recognize our students and hear about each of them individually. There's plenty of space in that area and that, in that room. Instead of here at the boardroom, you can tell how packed it can get in here. So it's nice to recognize all of them there in that special event to have all their parents there to be able to watch. Looking forward to the community recognition coming up later this month. Let's see. I did ha- want to clarify, there's been some talk on social media that I've received and some emails to board members regarding transfers from other districts and I just wanted to make sure we're following our interdist- interdistrict transfer requirements as stated in our board policy five, 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 one, one, nine point two. And that make, means that all of the agreements of interdistrict transfers, they must be approved by the residents they're coming from before we add them to our, our roster. So I just wanted to make sure that we're following those. And I did have a question related to that, that I didn't get a chance to submit earlier, but I'll ask now and, and I maybe not be able to give me the information now, but after the board meeting. How many students have been released and transferred to PYLUSD? Where are we with, specifically with the USI and the Bernardo Yorba OCCS? And then when they are requesting transfer from one district to another, is there any enrollment window? Is it, does it, is it perpetual or like we have entered, we have transfers between schools here and we have a particular window? So I was just curious if there is a, a set date of enrollment window for students to choose when they're moving from one district to another. And I also had received a request from a community member to have the podium available for public comments. So thank you for doing that. I know it's a heavy lift. I watched you guys scoot it around, but I appreciate that. That helps people feel a little bit more comfortable, have a place to put their documents. And then also if they need a little balance support, that's there for them. So thank you for that. And on a last note, thank you to all the teachers and the classified staff that we are going to be, that we're honoring this week and that we're honoring in the next upcoming weeks for Classified Employee Week and this year, or this week for Teacher Appreciation. Thank you so much for all you do, all you've done for all of my children over, over the time that they've been here. My youngest is graduating next month. That's a bittersweet time for me and I also have a, a new grandchild that will be born over the summer. So it's, it's a, it's an important time. And so thank you for all that you've done for all of my children so much.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I think I'm gonna be switching my board report today. First, I want to be clear that I knew about developer fees. The board passes them every December. There's a report and it's all outlined. So you can go to any December board agenda and pull up that report. And that's why I gave everybody a packet because there was so much confusion on what they, what it was. Second, I attended, I, like I said, Dr. Chernus gave me information about the Fullerton sports program. And so I did my deal, due diligence and I spoke to a board member. I called one of the providers and I attended the parent meeting. So let me give you the lowdown. Basically, Fullerton School District is partnering with several different organizations, sports team, sports programs, dance teams, swim, et cetera. And it's indep- through independent study. So they're facilitating their students take their first five courses with their four courses plus an elective and then have they be released for independent study. And they're monitoring their logs and making sure they're getting those. What the district is not doing is paying for those specialized training. There, it is not free. I talked to the Director of Operations for Delta, which is one of the largest ones there. And the fee for that is $10,000 a year. And they don't provide trans, the district doesn't provide transportation or anything. So again, there is no free specialized sports training program that I am aware of. And if anyone can find me one, I'd be happy to research it and report about it. So also, I, because I keep getting cut off, I talked to our attorney and also some people that are experts in the Brown Act. And once you bring a program up like USI, we can talk about it because that is how you talk about it, why you would vote for it or why you would not. So you don't have, it's not on the limited thing and I suggest that you talk to our attorney about that.
I did.
And, good, because I did too. And then maybe we should get an opinion. And then also, I wanted to let our president know, just remind her of the roles of the president in board bylaw, 9121. It's number six, recognize persons who desire to speak and protect the speaker who has the floor from disturbances and interference. And seven, facilitate the board's effective deliberation, ensuring that each board member has an opportunity to participate in the deliberation and that discussion remains focused. And I'll just pass this on to you.
I don't need it. I'm good, thank you.
And I just wanted to remind everybody that when we had the critical race theory, Mrs. Freeman and Mrs. Buck were president during that time and they did not agree with that discussion, but they made sure that all of our voices were heard. And we were never cut off or called to vote. They let us deliberate and have our discussion. And I can also remember a time when we were writing a letter to the governor and Mrs. Buck was president at that time. And Mrs. Freeman, she, she stated her objection and why she wouldn't vote for it. And then we were able to continue. She didn't keep interrupting us or things like that. So I just want the same respect that's been given in the past. Also, you'll have noticed that in the last couple of agenda items in closed session, there's been information about the Palaki lawsuit. And it's not in the agenda anymore because it was dismissed by the judge. So I just wanted to report that information out. Also, last month, I requested several items during the meeting. Requested expenditures related to the Orange County Super, Computer Science School. Requested on the innovatorium labs and the budget. I requested amended budgets for preschools and the ELO program. Requested estimated budgets for TK expansions, including buildings, playgrounds and bathrooms and equipment. I requested documentation or budgets that we have reserved to pay for the TK expansion coming forward. And I asked about how many student athletes that we have currently that compete at the state, national and Olympic level. I have not received my information, so this is my official letter to Dr. Chernus. As a board member and as a public records request. And also I've included everything from tonight's meeting that I added and I'll be sending an email as well. The Arts, Music and Instructional Block Grant. So let's talk about this. This is very interesting because we, they, they, the budgets have been amended without board approval. And according to our board policy, 3170 budget control, budget administrators have to be advised periodically of the conformity of the expenditures to the budget approved by the Board of Education. And when it's necessary to extend the control limits established by the board, a request of transfer funds may be recommended. So if they are changing the budget, they need to notify the board and we need to approve it. Also, board policy 3120, preparation of budget documents. The financial records shall also be adequate to see as a guide for budget estimates and to hold expenditures to the amounts appropriate. It doesn't mean that, that's how we know we're spending our money correctly, that we're not just changing it. So I'm just asking that we keep our, follow our own bylaws. And since we've not had any updates since the grant was voted and the integrity of what the board passed in September has been compromised, I'm requesting that the original totals be restored and the budget to the board approved in the September 2023 be utilized. I'm requesting any alterations of any budget grant that was board approved to be reviewed to verify the original approval and the integrity of that spending is follow. And this will facilitate our policies and, and service notifications. We've had two, we've had first and second interim and none of this came up in it. So, and then, oh, I have the notes from the parent meeting if anyone's interested. It has QR codes, et cetera, and all my notes I took. Also, so now.
All right, we're in six, your past six minutes.
Okay. Seven minutes? I think you did nine last time, so I'll just follow your example.
We were missing a board member when it came to me, so we were under the 30. There was only four board member reports.
So I'll just highlight a few and I'll just start with congratulating our comprehensive high schools for their rankings in US. And I've attended a lot of things, including Exceptional Educators, Main Place Choir. I attended Finding Nemo by Linda Vista. I attended the Rio Vista Health Fair, which was amazing. The dental clinic, the student recognition ceremony. And I would just like to express gratitude for all those who came out to volunteer for Love Placentia and Love Yorba Linda. We had, between the two days, we had over 1,600 volunteers participate and completed 6,400 volunteer hours out of a value of a quarter of a million dollars. So thank you to everybody who came out and worked. And I like to thank our teachers and our classified staff as well. And I hope everyone takes a moment to thank somebody. Thank you.
Mr. Youngblood.
Okay. All right, good evening, folks. I wanted to let you know that I had attended the Esperanza Senior Awards at, held at Valencia High School, myself and Dr. Gray were there. And it was incredible to see these kids that are, have achieved throughout four years and just the directions which they're going off to. Some of them that are not just nationally or in the state, national, but some of them are even going international. It's just, it's incredible to see all these, these kids, including our own student board member. She was truly just a, a light that shined up there. So I, I wanted to congratulate her and, and all of her classmates on that kind of achievement. So it was a, it was a pretty good time. I also wanted to just re-thank teachers just for their, your year-long dedication. It's a shame to me that there's really only one week put, put for teacher appreciation. It should be something that could be extended out a whole month, but you know, and even though you may hear a lot of bashing against unions and, and the like, we do appreciate children, our, our teachers' children, children's teachers. There we go. Little dyslexia there. So, once again, also I wanted to send a big thanks, thanks out to Dr. Chernus. Dr. Chernus is in the process of helping me. Dr. Churnus is in the process of helping me gather information for a new career pathway to be brought to our district. This career pathway would be in conjunction with the North Orange County Regional Auction Center and its Emergency Response Pathway. And in this pathway, you can clap, absolutely. In this pathway, students would be able to take up something like fire technology. I don't know why I really like that, but yes, fire technology, also emergency response, and get an Emergency Medical Technician Certificate to go through this, this program. So thank you, Dr. Churnus, for doing that. Looking forward to a lot more graduations coming up next month. Holy cow, it's already here on us. More of these, these senior awards are coming up, and I appreciate all of our board members that are able to make those, because it's, it's really, really great for these kids to, to look up there and see all of their school leaders and administrators there to kind of give them a, you know, just a congratulation. So thank you, guys, again, and that's the end of my board report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Frazier.
All right. Well, it's been said already several times, but thank you so much to all the teachers. I think it goes without saying, but I'll say it anyways, that Placentia Yorba Unified School District teachers are some of the best around by far. And we, I wouldn't be a part of this board, and my students wouldn't attend this district if that wasn't the truth. So I would really appreciate each and every one of you educators and all that you do. I had the opportunity to attend the, if you haven't had a chance, the Comedy Sports High School League at Yorba Linda High School Theater. I always enjoy every time I come to see anything that Ms. Pets and the theater crew puts on. And it is, if you haven't seen Whose Lines Anyways, it's, it's improv comedy, and we had a great time. Next, I believe next Friday the 17th, if you're available to come check it out at Yorba Linda High School. I've heard a rumor that it's students versus teachers, so that could be entertaining if you're looking for something to do on a Friday night. Anyways, always enjoy seeing the kids do what they do best, and enjoy their gifts onstage, specifically with Yorba Linda and, and all the other schools as well. In addition, I also want to just briefly touch on the USI trustee Anderson brought up Fullerton, which I think is a great opportunity for us to showcase that we are doing something different. Fullerton is partnering with other vendors to do it outside of the district, and bringing them in, whereas we are doing a completely different in-house type of program, which I think is innovative and really sets a new standard. So I am excited about how this is looking and how it's shaping up. I'm not sure what the comments I've heard about, you know, well, there's no way that this is free. Well, it's part of the ADA funding that's going to take care of it. The developer funds are going to build it, and students are coming and excited to be a part of it. So that's the end of my board report. I wish you all a Happy Mother's Day, and I look forward to being with you next meeting.
Thank you, Todd. I was able to attend the Yorba Linda Women's Club Awards, and then also the awards last night, and I've also attended a few other things that I don't want to go over the six minutes this time. So I'm going to talk about some things that have been going around on social media accusing people of book bans. And so one thing that was shared to us, from us by our attorney, which I don't know if people realize, is that Penal Code Section 313.1, and also Education Code 60200.5, and Education Code 233.5, is what is giving the authority for school districts to pull pornographic material out of the libraries. And so what I will say to this is it is actually a crime if a librarian, or a teacher, or somebody slips in some type of pornographic book into the library. It says, "Every person who, with knowledge that a person is a minor, or who fails to exercise reasonable care in ascertaining the true age of a minor, knowingly sells, rents, distributes, sends, causes to be sent exhibits, or offers to distribute or exhibit by any means any harmful matter to the minor, shall be punished as specified in Section 313.4." Harmful matter means matter taken as a whole, which to the average person applying contemporary statewide standards builds to the prurient, that's a word, interest, and is matter taken, taken as a whole depicts or describes in a patently offensive way sexual conduct, and which, taken as a whole, lacks serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific value for minors. So if we have books in our library that are pornographic, which we have, we are actually following the law of California and Ed Code. So we shouldn't be talking that we're banning books. What we're doing is we are following the law. And other school districts have tried to start doing committees, and they've started, let's, let's get a committee and have the parents like go and pull the book. You don't need the committee, you have it right here. It's the law, and if it stays in the library, who is the person who's going to get arrested? Who gets arrested for that? Is it the librarian? Is it the teacher? Or is it Dr. Churnus? Is it us? Who's responsible? So we're following the law, we're not banning books. I'm sure you can go to the public library, you can go to Amazon, you can go wherever you'd like to purchase the book. However, it is against the law for it to be in a school library. And I also wanted to point out as well that the CTA is opposing SB 1435, which requires the governing board of a school district to exclude from schools and school libraries serving pupils in preschool through grade eight, all books, publications, or papers that contain obscene manners. And so we really should be asking and working together with our unions and asking these questions, why they're opposing a bill that would keep this type of material and things that are actually violating the Penal Code and Ed Code, why are they trying to get it into the library for ages K through eight? I also, we've, I've had several teachers, and I've had several community members, one in particular, she hounds me. She wants armed school resource officers at all of our schools. And so Bill Estaley has brought forward a bill that the CTA is also opposing, which is to hire or contract with at least one armed school resource officer, or someone authorized to carry a firearm, to be present at each school in a district or charter, or when pupils are present. And so I think what we need to be doing is we need to be talking to our local unions and, and advocating and working together to try to not only stay within the law in our libraries, but also too, to keep our kids safe. Because why would we oppose any type of measure, especially in this day and age, that wouldn't keep our kids safe? Can, Jeremy, can you put up the video of Bernardo, the, the empty room that's going to be the Innovation Lab for everybody to see? No problem. I just wanted everybody to know that the Innovation Lab at Orange County School of Computer Science, it is essentially, they gave us a, when we all went, as I spoke last time, they showed us everything that was going to be in this. And so Garner and Holt is the company, one of the company that is partnering with us. And what Garner and Holt is, is, if you guys are all familiar with Disneyland, which I know I am, I spent many years at Disneyland when my kids were little, the Fantasmic and the Electrical Parade, all of that stuff, the, that computer, the robotics, that is all what is going to be in that Innovation Lab. So here's the video, let's see if it will go, but this is the room. Okay, it's okay. So anyways, it's a picture of the room that we were discussing where the Innovation Lab is going to be, and from what I was seeing on some social media posts, there was people on there saying, "Just give kids Chromebooks and some Wi-Fi, and there will be set for Computer Science School." Well, we're taking that...
We're, I'm here in 201.
We're here, what we're, what we're here to tell you is that right now the kids do have a Chromebook, and they do have Wi-Fi. And so we are taking it up to the next level. So Garner and Holt is huge. There's going to be big expectations. So this is not just coding, and this is like, this is a hu, a bigger step. In fact, there's going to be their, I think they're getting their robot, that weren't, or Bernardo Yorba is getting their robot for their Innovation Lab. So this is more than just what the public's trying to say, give a kid a Chromebook and Wi-Fi. And I'll tell you, I couldn't, when we were at the wrestling tournament at Valencia, I was trying to post, go live on Instagram to show everybody the crowd, and I couldn't because the Wi-Fi was so bad. So that would be one thing that we should up, because that's my constant complaint, is I can never do anything because the Wi-Fi is so bad. So there's more to the Orange County School of Computer Science than just a Chromebook and some Wi-Fi. They have been working to up the ante and to do so many good things, and I think everybody here should research Garner and Holt. I tried to post on social media about our partnership with the Nixon Library and our civics, and the Yorba Linda Buzz, and the Placentia Buzz refused to post it. And so that's another thing we just have to be very like aware of, is that there's social media sites that are not ever going to try to reflect what is going on and what is good that's happening in our district. So that's why we keep saying, watch the board meetings, talk to the board, talk to the superintendent, because there's people in the community who don't want to see us succeed, so they just refuse to post it. They posted a job listing today, but if I, specifically, try to post on one of the buzz sites about like our great partnership with the Nixon Library, they just won't even allow it to go. And so another thing too, just, just to be clear, because this was also put out on Twitter, and it tagged myself, Sean, and Todd. They were trying to make it appear that there was a middle school in our district that needed a washing machine, and so they knew very well, or it was, everybody was fully aware, that this was the Fullerton School District. But they somehow were saying, well, this, you know, these guys at USI, they're, they're building this multimillion dollar thing, but they can't even give a washing machine. So just so you know, you have to be very wary of people on social media, because this was not our school district, this was Fullerton School District. And so there's no middle school person who has a broken washing machine or a broken dryer, just so we're all clear. And once again, thank you to all our teachers, thank you to all of our staff. Like Todd says, I've, all three of my kids have gone or go to school in our district, and we appreciate everything that everybody does. And I wish everybody who's a mother, a Happy Mother's Day. And with that, I will call for an adjournment. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mrs. Anderson, I was thinking about Mr. Youngblood. All those in favor, Mrs. Buck? Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Youngblood?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
An aye, an aye. Motion carries 5-0. Our next board meeting will be June 4th, which will be the Budget and LCAP Public Hearings. Thank you, have a good night.